Welcome everybody, Mr. Brain would you start sir?
Alright, so we'd like to welcome our Lewis County Board members and Dr. Stewart to our 2025 LSIC presentation. So I'd like to start by introducing our LSIC members. So it's myself, Mrs. Fisher, my assistant principal, Amanda Dos, one of our special educators, Lisa Harwell, our fourth grade teacher, one of the money penning, service personnel, Hannah Curtis, home service personnel, Rota Vincent, ICAS coordinator, Megan Brok, high school nurse, and then Katrina Smith, Brittany Burlett, and Randy Hattington, our white parents. And Brittany is our chair this year, she was a summer teacher, turn us on for a second. You notice around the hallways and cafeteria, I'd like to give a shout out to Mrs. Barrett for featuring our part of all of our pre-K through fifth grade students, so she came to us last year, she was our second grade teacher and moved into her art position. Has been a fantastic addition to us and really ties in the literature, science, math piece into art. On Friday, she does a STEAM session with each class, so she gets some more hands on interviews with them. Has been a really great addition to our special area. So just wanted to give her a quick shout out and all of our students were committed on the hard work to stay around the room. Also, we want to give a shout out to the Abrao family from Southwest Texas barbecue. In Weston, they graciously donated our food for the evening for you, so make sure that you enjoy that throughout the evening. And next time you stop in there, give them our thanks as well. We're going to start with our school in progress and look at our academic data. So I'm going to start with Mrs. Fisher, our assistant principal.
Okay, so I put a copy of the presentation in your folders if it's a little complicated to see. And there's some papers that I didn't put into the PowerPoint, but the reports that you might want to look at at a later time for your reference. So as far as our progress towards our strategic plan, we always start with our beginning of the year data. So I will share that we tested 402 students for IRE grade. We have students, 78 students scored one or above level. We have 203 students scored one level below and 121 students scored two or more grade levels below. For math, we tested 401 students with 39 students on our above level. We had 232 students, one grade level or below, and then 130 students that are two or more grade levels below. With our GSA data, I know that Mrs. Savatelli had shared this previously, but I will reiterate that our average proficiency rate was 31.8%. The state's average is 47.4%, so we scored 15.6% below the state average in math. Our average proficiency was 29%, the state's average proficiency, proficiency rate is 30.6%. And we again scored below that state average by 9.6%. In science, our average here was 22.8%, the state's level is 29.9%. Again, a deficit here at 7.1% below that average. So as we looked through our data, we worked and talked with our teachers, we realized that there's a lot of work to be done. So what we are doing to remediate all those deficiencies that we've noticed is providing tiered levels of support. So there's a lot of different things that we are currently doing to address the needs that have been identified in our beginning of year assessments and reflected back on our GSA scores. So all of our students here Peterson Center are receiving core whole group instruction with their classroom teacher, as well as small group and one-on-one intervention as seen. We also have some co-teaching with our special educators and our Title I teachers pushing into grade level classrooms. We currently have 73 students who are receiving Title I intervention. Two students who are working with Angie Holden that are receiving EL services. We have currently 120 students receiving special education services. We have 15 students in our active program currently. And we have 27 students with active SAT plans. And we do have some other students who are preparing to leave with Mr. Brand, so that may increase. Looking at the instruction that we're providing, we are looking at a standards aligned instruction model, so that's where we have some support. And we are having our teachers to provide that instruction that's aligned to their grade level standards. And it's differentiated to meet each student's individual needs. We are asking for teachers to share with their students what they will be learning so that they fully understand what is it that they're going to be able to know and do and how they're going to know that they are able to produce that outcome. So what we ask teachers to do is in the morning, share with them, this week in reading, you're going to be able to read words that have the short A, add sound. So that way, if I'm walking through the hallway and I ask a student, what are you learning about? They can easily tell me in a very kid's early way that I'm learning to read new words that have the A sound that makes them add sound. So we want our students to really understand the meaning and purpose of why they come to school and that is to work their standards. We think that by doing that, that's going to help increase their knowledge of what they're doing. It's going to help our teachers stick to the curriculum and to the standards that they need to be teaching. It's clear that we have work to do, so to work on remediating those deficiencies, we need to make sure that we are providing our teachers and our students with what they need as far as support. Mr. Ray and I have looked at walkthroughs to date, we have, I skipped over that, sorry, 98 walkthroughs. So at that time, we're seeing a lot of students engaged in learning, we are seeing those I can't say this posted. We are seeing students centered learning, students are getting to use their voices while teachers are facilitating. So we're seeing some really good stuff as well as small group instruction. As far as our teachers, as we are moving into more of a PLC or professional learning community model, we've been looking at some team meetings until we get a little bit more professional development so that we are operating those appropriately. So in the meantime, we've been having two meetings. We have kindergarten and fifth grade meet Tuesday mornings, we have first and fourth grade meet on Wednesdays, and second and third on Thursdays. Today, we invited Title I to provide some grade level writing support as they are the experts in English language arts. So we want to tap into those resources that we have on site. We've had IRE giving up your data analysis that gave our teachers the opportunity to really look at the results that I shared with you earlier so that they can see what are areas that we need to focus on. As far as the instruction that the students are doing with their individual lessons, we are working with teachers. Mrs. Savatelli has provided some training, we've had some onsite coaching so that teachers really understand just what IRE has to offer to support them and their kiddos with those lessons so that we can see better outcomes when we take their diagnostic. We've also had some co-teaching with our special educators who just joined those team meetings this last week. So as far as our professional development that I kind of mentioned, we have, to date, we have K2 and 35 Rising P. We've had our IRE math and online instruction. We recently had on the Professional Learning Day, some unpacking of grade level standards with SRE to better support our teachers so that we know that they fully understand with all the changes of content standards, that they truly understand what they are responsible for teaching their students at their grade level. And then again, some co-teaching support. We have been designated as a CSI school and I know that that was shared previously, so we look forward to using those supports to help us work towards making our school even better and improving in those areas that aren't as strong. So our year one focus will be a foundations of improvement, so we're going to look at our mission. Is it period focused, our positive and safe environment and that family and community partnership? And then as we continue to work with our coordinators and then our coach, Mrs. Savatelli, then we're going to be able to go through that continuum as that's pulled up to us. So in addition to Mrs. Savatelli and our peer, Mr. Kennedy from the state, we also will have the support of our directors that we have here in Lewis County as well, and our parents, families, community partners. I'm going to now pass this on to Ms. Mina who is going to share some information about our attendance unless does anybody have questions for me as far as pressure.
Hi, how are you? Our attendance here today is something important, we honestly asked that, that's where we got to really focus in on. But for with all these communities and schools, I want to increase our attendance rate. This year, I'm wanting to decrease our problematic absence. So that is a big goal against a statewide goal as well as a county goal for communities and schools. Universal support is every minute matters can be. So one thing that we did is we did pledge to be here stickers and we gave them to the whole school. We've got a style, our magnet with the calendar, days out, and so it also does accountability so the parents or the students can track their days that they've been absent throughout the year. And it was also shared on Facebook and ClassDojo. Universal support, all the family communication, the building relationships, the draw up. Pick up a family that, like I said, one or two things is going to happen here with our kiddos, or they're going to come in dancing, or they're going to run the bus. Because they want to dance.
Why don't they dance on the bus?
They can't be on the bus, but they can dance.
I'll go bust their dance.
Our Happy Year Here, so we're going to do monthly Happy Year Here, and what I'll do is I'll come into the lodge. I think we've put all the students that are present that day into a wheel, we put it up here, we spin it, if their name's drawn, they'll get a prize. We're going to incorporate some family engagement with that and we're still working out the details on that. What we're allowed to do, maybe, you know, like pizza night at Domino's and just, you know, it's a deal, two pizzas or whatever. So we're still working on that, but what we'll do is those kids that are present, we're also going to engage the families and say thank you for being your kids here to school. We're also working on a Happy Year Here city board for no events, but be a live attendance data board. For like no give her, it's going to be like a turkey trough, a turkey roast between the two classes. So we're going to put little teacher hands on turkeys and, you know, let the kids play some out, and it'll all be great, you know. I meet with Eric briefly to discuss his concerns, make meaningful contacts. Thank you. There we go, we had 49 three-day contact letters, 29 five-days, and one report. And four trips. So that is something I think we are very appreciative of, Mr. Craig, Sheriff Matt, Angie Mullins, and the teacher Kirk Patrick, that they are, we're all on the same page now, I believe, as far as attendance and following through those protocols. So that's been great. Only thing, something that is really hurting us, tardies. Kids checking in late and kids being picked up early, they are missing an actual 45 minutes instructional time. And as far as I know, I do not think we have a policy about tardies. I know when I was young, I'm old now, it was like three tardies, keep looking a day absent, right? So I don't know if that's something that could possibly help us to look forward to in the future or just throw that there.
Alright, so our parent involvement.
Thanks.
So our parent involvement activities, right now we have onboard 25 board approved volunteers. The org is my BTO president Katrina. We have 740 parents connected on ClassDojo, which is a great way for our school to communicate. If we need something in a pinch, put out a message and we almost get it here and we can now. And it's also the best way that our parents and our staff communicate in an easy and professional manner. And we also have 10 family events scheduled for this year. So far, we've had two of those, our open house, we had 312 students. Break that down, that's about 200 someish families, especially count some siblings in there. We had a really good turnout, we had in our cafeteria, kind of like a go-to station, we had community and schools counseling technology. So all of our families could stop and send different things if they needed to, and then they called the school and met their teacher. And this past week, we had our third grade camp out and had about 31, I believe, 32 students attend that out of 60. So we were forced to hold that and those are some of the more events that we have coming up, scheduled for everyone here to reach our families.
Okay, our community partners, so Stone Hole Church used to do our backpacks for us every year. So in the end of last year, they let us know, we don't think we're going to be able to do it this year. So, okay, so at the beginning of this year, Mount Morris Church, which Andrew Heaton attends, and then Berlin Church, which Leonard Johnson attends. They arranged Berlin's going to do half the year, and then Mount Morris is going to do the other half. Right now, I have about 50 kids on our magnet burger, we all know that could be a lot more. A lot more, especially coming up with all the uncertainty that's going on right now. But we're very thankful for them. And then, so the resources I was able to negotiate with here in my home building, which was great. You know, so they definitely stepped up. Lewis County CEOs and Berlin Church donated school supplies. Texas Roadhouse, third grade worker too, they give us certificates for PAX leaders or academic achievement or whatever, that the kids get a free meal. And then of course, Berkshire Hathaway, they did landscape at the beginning of the year, donation of leaders, and they brush off the hill. So and that's under Jason Drummond and Gary Jed Roscoe, I have another backpack, just go with me. Alright.
Alright, I'd like to invite my counselor, Mrs. Light, to pick them up, and she's going to talk about how planning is going to develop the community of people first.
Hello. Okay, so we'll start in here with the mental health, this is our, some of our community-based mental health agencies that work with us. They actually come into our school, home base, they currently have 9 students. Mountain Path, they do wraparound services, they provide services at school, regional, and they currently have six, we have eight on the waiting list. They just had somebody leave their agency, so that's why we have their list, we spin it up for them to get somebody hired. Community Care, they currently seat six and they have several on their waiting list as well. We could fill them up probably all week, but it's just the times that they can give us because they also go into other. And Julie, you're on one day a week. Yeah, one day a week, actually home base now is coming one and a half days, so she was able to squeeze in some things because teachers have the bigger screen. Some things that I do, I go into the classrooms, I go into all classrooms, pre-K through fifth grade. I try to get there weekly, but depending on what's happening throughout the day, I mean, I'll make it there. This is just first quarter data, so it doesn't include the last couple weeks, but, so first quarter, obviously, classrooms, 91 times. And the counter check-ins and that's ICAS, that is how many students individually I see, not that how many the times I've seen them. Because most of them, I will say, are check-in daily, usually if they come in at the day and they leave at the day. And that's ICAS, that's 46 that there's students as well. One of the things that I do that I do daily on here is that also I help coordinate some school activities. This week is Red Ribbon Week, if you have seen, you know, Camo now, and it's Camo Day today. We also do Be a Buddy Week, and I'm just. Oh, I also do, yes, I also do with the tendencies.
So moving on to our PBIS packs and discipline. At the beginning of this year, we determined that there was just all kinds of rules, there was outdated posters, there was just a whole plethora of stuff. And we've got to find a way to make that cohesive so that everybody's on the same page. So we took the initiative at the beginning of last year, the spring, and put together a PBIS academy team made up of our different special area and grade level teachers. So they met together, went to a couple of trainings that the state held through Marshall. And then we came up with our PBIS plan for the year. So with the help of Aaron Aguilar, from Behavioral Support Specialist, and through Marshall University, we put together our whole PBIS package that we rolled out at the beginning of this year. So what we did, so we looked at a framework and we wanted something with tier support and the implement PAX. So we were looking for a way to marry PAX, which was required by the county, but also PBIS review required by the county and state. So my team went together, put those, meshed those together, married them, so that we have a way to integrate both of those. So then they made our posters and our language so that it was common in the cafeteria, in special area, in the classroom, in the hallways, in the bathrooms, on the playground, every area, and they can tell you what it looks like, what it sounds like, and what it should feel like. And we hung those up around the school so that all of them are visible, like that one right there that says cafeteria boss. So we got everybody on the same boat, ready to go, beginning of the year, and every teacher got a binder. In the beginning of it, the first two weeks, we focused on our behavior lesson plans, so every classroom focused on those routines and expectations. Halfway through September, we were seeing a couple increases of behaviors, so I told them, listen, we got to back it up a little bit. So back it up, reteach, and we're still reteaching in October until eventually those begin to rain. And then keeping that common language year to year, and those same expectations will follow. So some things we do to express that and share that, we do our tool on the morning announcements every morning. If you see somebody spreading kindness, you can give them a tool shout out at the place in the mailbox at the office. We give them a shout out during our morning announcements. Mrs. Benson is working on our PAX leaders of the month, she's the one that shares with them, they get an empty little bracelet and a certificate. And we do a character habit every month that relates back to that. And then she's also making positive phone calls home, so every student that is the PAX leader of the month, she's going to pull by the end of October and call home to them to make that positive form of school connection. And then we also do different classroom acknowledgements and celebrations, and every teacher kind of puts a spend on our own PBIS program. So our PAX partners, Emily Kimber and Teresa are our PAX partners, and they work with Amanda Gray on our PAX team for the county and shares out information related to PAX during our faculty senate meetings. And they also have a pamphlet point that my teachers have access to, that is everything PAX, and that's where they go to if they need a refresher or if they need to refer to something. If you look at discipline, here to date, right now, we have 43 incidents, 12 of those were Level One, which is disruptive disrespectful conduct, which means they only happen in the classrooms. Level Two also happened in the classroom or in the school area somewhere, and those numbers are listed for you right there. And if we look at our Level Threes, right now, we have, if you count our Level Threes, we've had no Level fours. So what we do for our Level Ones and Twos is we behavior track that, that's part of our PBIS tracking form. So they will track those behaviors to see if we can figure out kind of where the behavior is occurring that hits something consistent. So then we know if we need to involve Mrs. Light with that to look at therapy, to look at some type of intervention. If it's a Level Three or above, it'll go straight to us because that means that's something that is not safe for students or for staff. So then we handle that with families and with the students directly. So some school-wide initiatives that we're doing right now, academically, all Page Two is doing rich to writing. There really wasn't a cohesive writing curriculum we were using. So over the summer, my Title One ladies got together to look at some training for that and train my teachers at house. They can also do that with the Ready Writing, Ready Writing, 335. Like Mrs. Fisher talked about, we are unpacking our grade level standards and moving towards I can statements. That was one of our initiatives that we decided to do at our leadership team over the summer, so that that is countywide, so that all our teachers are onboard, same things. Some other school initiatives to address culture, we do morning announcements, usually live from my office every morning. On Fridays, we call Wildcat, wake up on the move when I go to a different classroom and broadcast from there. Teachers are holding morning meetings at the beginning of their classes, talking about what they're going to do for the day, kind of setting the tone, enjoying some team building. They also do a kid of a reflection, which lasts about half the day, they go, what do we need to do better tomorrow? You know, here's what tomorrow's going to look like. During our rant blog that I send on Sundays, so that everybody knows what's going on, Mrs. Fisher has a MySpot Monday. So they have to find the link in the blog and sign up, and it's the park right beside me, so they get it for the week. So most of them are anxious for the blog to come out, so they can click on the spot. And then she puts her name on the wheel and it's drawn by luck. So that's another incentive for them to open the blog and to read it, because they usually can read it somewhere in a paragraph, it's not just out there. And then our social committee has some events listed throughout the month to keep us in building. We've just done a picnic day, we did a salad day, very food driven, because nobody wants to pack a lunch. So they have us going with that, we should do something once a month. For behavior wise, we talked about our PBIS implementation of our Paul's Expectations and PAX, so we have that building wide if you go into. If you go into any classroom, you'll see the same language throughout the school. And before we get into our in-class two interviews with Mrs. Fisher, are we where, so test scores, are they where they're, are they, are they where they are at right now? Supposedly, absolutely not, which is why we were designated our CSI school, which is also due to some bad past practice that we now could know better, you know, we know better than we do better. And I told my teachers that we got to get back to teaching the standards. So they were excited to not just follow one curriculum, like whatever you need to do to teach that standard and master it, that's what you need to do. It's been wonderful to work with Mrs. Savatelli. The amount of district support we've gotten this year has been probably one of the best I've had so far in my admin career. Especially seeing them in the building, being able to ask the questions, and the amount of support that they provided for us to give that, our teachers the time to unpack those standards and for them to bring in our consultants and our facilitators and our friends.
Well, that's like the same thing for doctors too, where any time that somebody asks for to come in, she schedules a visit, she comes in, and she's been right here alongside Mrs. Savatelli to offer, so thank you.
What is something that you've worked so far?
All right, let's try this again.
What is something that you've worked?
Do this, it's a tactic.
What is something that you've worked so far?
Hey, Kathy.
I've been playing the kitchen.
You've worked how to play in the kitchen, are you safe in the kitchen?
Yeah.
That's.
We might, and we might have to pretend. Let me just refresh, I'm really sorry. This is what's supposed to happen, right, that never goes to plan, something always has to mess up, right? Well, it's my kind of shot, I'm sorry.
What is, what is, what is something that you've worked so far?
I've been playing my kitchen.
You've worked how to play in the kitchen, are you safe in the kitchen? That's really important.
It is here, well, it's the thing, doesn't it? Well, I have one other option, which, sorry.
You know, worst part of the question, you must have said.
I have, I wish it could have gone faster today. All right, let's try it this way.
What has yours are?
I've been playing the kitchen.
You've worked how to play in the kitchen, are you safe in the kitchen?
Yeah.
That's really important. You. This is an interview, can you tell me one thing you knew about school?
All right, so let's play without music, is that okay? Do you want me to just play?
Thank you.
Are you like, yeah?
I've been playing the kitchen.
Something that you've worked in the kitchen, are you safe in the kitchen?
Yeah.
That's really important, huh? Thank you. Hi, Harper, this is an interview, can you tell me what is something you learned about school?
How do I work on it, and we'll just play it on the break if I can get it to work, how about that? You wonder why I need some technical assistance.
So on that though, I would like to thank Mrs. Fisher for helping put our presentation together, and my staff members who are here to support us. And once again, thank you for meeting our LSSE presentations. And if there's some time for board meetings, if you'd like to join some more too. And if you have any other questions for me on that. All right.
What's your road went out here?
Right now, 462.
And your max is what?
First grade is maxed out except for one spot. Everybody else could probably have three or four more, until about 493 max.
How is your staffing?
Staffing is good, we're actually getting ready to hire a growth specialist this evening, and we will only need one position filled. So staffing, thankfully, is not an issue for us.
Since Johnny asked about staffing, I, and I know you guys only have been here a year or two, but do keep track of absenteeism on staff like we do for, I might have missed it.
We do.
Like we do, like we do for the students.
We do, so that's one thing that I look at, because I don't think my other staff members should be privy to that information. So Mrs. Fisher, myself, ask Mariah for absence reports, and then have those conversations, so I can discuss that.
I appreciate that, I think it's, may sound funny, but I think that, that may tell something about the morale of a school, and, and it just see it from year to year. Maybe this isn't the proper place to ask it, but just came up when he said staff.
Absolutely.
So there's been a constant flow of construction, which is good, I think. So tell us, tell us what else we can do to support you guys.
Well, so what you've already done is we have our new HVAC up and running. They're still working on a couple bells and whistles, the new boiler is done, the new fire alarm system is done. At one point in here, there was 30-some men roaming the hallways right before school started, just people everywhere. But thankfully, we got it all done. Couple of you came out to open house, and my staff poured it together, you wouldn't even know construction's happening. So all that is done, Mr. Maliko is working on our road, will hopefully fix our parental problem. We will stop getting complaints from Berlin Road. Not going to happen, but we can be hopeful. But I'm hoping that will fix a lot of it, it should be about one-fourth a mile, which is about the same distance from our entrance to Walmart. So that should only get a lot of the traffic, the staff cut it down to about 15, but it's. Forget, it was 25, now we've scaled back to 15, now we've learned how to manage. We also were fortunate to get some new toilets with our water conservation, and new lighting with the energy conservation. Mr. Maliko has been replaced as well. So right now, we're still working on upgrading our bathrooms, we would like to see the bathroom floors redone. The tile that we had in there is nasty, and we would like to rip it up and do kind of like an epoxy-type surface. And then some new sink fixtures, which fix our restrooms.
You've had trouble with your bathrooms for about two years now?
We have, over the summer, one of our issues was the prepaid bathrooms, and Katrina took it apart, so it kind of fixes up a little bit. It would still be nice to have that epoxy, she did go ahead and paint it, and sand down some of the tiles and stuff, and she did that under the urines. But it would be nice just to have a whole floor redone, to get rid of that seepy urine smell, and just epoxy the whole thing so it's clear and also easy to wash down easily. Yes, so the prepaid playground, I was actually just talking to Mrs. Savatelli about that. She is looking into a couple different brands and a couple of resources to help with our prepaid playground. And then we're working on some beautification product, projects of our playground up on the hill, but I'm waiting to see what our parent pickup loop looks like before we proceed with that. That was one thing our LSSE talked about when we met last month, but I'd like to wait until they're done to see how wide the road is, to see what kind of barriers and additional problems up in the place. Yes, and ceiling tiles are working on getting replaced. So major improvements from last year. So if we could really honestly just get the bathroom floors and the sink fixtures, that would take care of the majority of our in-house. And also still looking at the heating and cooling units in the classrooms, because I know they're old. I know Mr. Maliko is looking for alternate fixes for that as well. Any other questions?
You also got a new lawn mower, didn't you?
We did, so we ended up getting the new Craftsman, and then for the hill, they ended up rebuilding one of the John Deere's. So they're able to tackle the hill with chains, and then like Mrs. Benson mentioned, Berkshire donated brand-new, can't think of the brand yet. It's the, still, brand-new, still Weenheers, for my custodians, Stewes and Aiden and Jim do a fantastic job working on the hill. And our mowing this year is going to be very productive, having both of them. Thank you. All right, thank you so much.